It is seven o'clock. Roll call, Danny?
Here.
Diana? Leah?
Here.
Kimberly? Kimberly?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Yeah, here. Dr. Salerno has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes.
Awesome. Let's all join in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is there someone amongst my colleagues to read the mission statement?
This is Jessica. I will do it.
Go ahead, Jessica. Thank you.
The Mountain Horrib area school district, in partnership with the community, is dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and powering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilled members of society.
Thank you, Jessica. Before we dive into the meeting, just a quick housekeeping item. We would, it would be great if people avoided chat tonight. We've got another way of soliciting citizen comments that we'll describe when we get to citizen comments. But let's not use chat as a group tonight, and we'll move on from there. Item 2A is approval of the presented revised agenda or any revisions to the agenda. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the presented agenda. So Jeff has moved.
Second, Kimberly?
Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those will say aye.
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 All those opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the presented agenda is approved. Item 7, 2B, approval of the July 20th, 2020 regular and executive session minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
This is Jessica. So moved.
Jessica has moved, and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve the July 20th minutes. Is there any discussion?
Rod, didn't we not have an executive session that night?
We did not.
Thank you, Leah. Will you revise your motion, Jeff? Jeff has moved that we approve the regular minutes of July 20. Jessica, do you still second that motion?
Yes, I think it went the other way, but yes. I think I moved to just second it, but yes.
All right, we're so well-covered on the July 20th minutes. Any further discussion? All those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no? The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the July 20th, 2020 minutes are approved. Item 2C, approval of the July 27th special meeting minutes.
So moved, Kimberly?
Kimberly moves.
This is Leah, second.
And Leah has seconded a motion to approve the July 27th special meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the special meeting minutes of July 27th are approved. Item 3A, school news. Ally?
Nothing to share today, thank you.
Dr. Salerno?
You don't need me to tell you that our kids never let us down. And let me give you the latest example of why I feel that way. Students from our service-oriented club called Club Interact, they have been creating a document for us here that I thought I'd share with you. We're just getting ready to start a partnership with the Friends of the State Street family to create and collect donations, non-perishable, perhaps even utensil-free, individualized snack items. Things like what you see on your screen, chips, squeezable applesauce, granovars, those kinds of things. We would appreciate any and all donations that you might have. Our Interact Club will be collecting those just right out front of our district's building. You'll see a black tote that we've created with a special tag on there, and encourage anyone who might have the ability to give. We would absolutely love to make certain that gets in the hands of people who need them. Our kids never let us down, and this is just the latest example of how they serve others during a time of crisis. Thank you.
Is there any other school news? Hearing none, item 3B, citizen comments. Tonight, we're trying a different approach. Dr. Salerno is going to open that phone for me. If you're interested in making a citizen comment, please text your first and last name and address to 608-250-9166, and we'll call your names in order from the phone that you're texting to. That number is 608-250-9166. We'll wait just another minute because we're trying something new. Any takers?
No one's requesting yet.
No takers. So we'll just give that telephone number one more time. All right. Are there any citizen comments? Any citizen comments? Last call for citizen comments. We'll give it another second or two. One more time, 608-250-9166. All right. Any takers?
No, but certainly if people want to text that number throughout the meeting, we have a section at the end of the meeting for citizens' comments too. So we'd be happy to collect those thoughts. If you don't mind just sending us your first and last name and your address, and then that way we can put you in the queue to speak tonight. Thank you.
Very good. Hearing no citizens wanting to make comments, we'll move to 4A, personnel transactions. Dr. Salerno?
Hey, if you don't mind me just mentioning to the entire board and those listening in, we wish a note of congratulations to Maureen McCarthy. Maureen has submitted her retirement paperwork that will become effective at the end of the next school year. At that time, she will have served 20 years in our school district. And of course, we wish Maureen and her beautiful family congratulations as we send off to the next part of her life, but we still get to have her for another year.
Awesome. Congratulations. Congratulations to Moe. Is there a motion to approve personnel transactions?
Motion to approve.
Jeff has moved?
This is Leah, second.
And Leah has seconded a motion to approve the personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item 5, consent agenda. Does any of my colleagues want any of these three things pulled?
Motion to approve consent agendas.
Leah has moved?
I can, Kimberly?
Kimberly has seconded a motion to approve the consent agendas. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the consent agenda is agreed to. Item 6A, committee member reports. Safety and Wellness Committee is up first. That's Leah. Go ahead, Leah.
All right. So at our last meeting, we discussed food service during quarantine and learned that we were able to provide meals for free. I think it was a USDA grant, but it might have been a different acronym grant. We also learned that the 40 families from the Backpack Program were able to stay on the Backpack Program, which was great. We discussed the Title IX policy that is going to be required by law, which will come before the board soon. And lastly, we discussed putting out an anti-discrimination slash racism statement from the district and from the board, something a lot of schools have done, and the committee feels like this is something we should pursue.
That's right. Questions or comments for Leah? Hearing none, we'll move on to buildings and grounds. Jeff?
All right, Brian Hough is still working with social distancing for the bus routes. And we'll have a little more time to work that out. Our new vehicles, which were supposed to be here the last week of August, won't be here until first week of October, maybe the middle of October due to delays. Our bus inspection is this week. And we have a new inspector for that. And we have two new drivers. One's been CDL and one's going through the process. Building and grounds. Ninety percent of the buildings are clean and ready to go. And that the classrooms and desks and everything are social-distanced as required. The custodians have made floor markers for that. The sanitizer dispensers are in each and every classroom. Mask will be in each room. And the visitors will be greeted at the flexi-glass at the stations and the offices. The long-range plan, also the summer work is about 75% done on the middle school roof. And they started the canopy this week. The middle school lockers were supposed to be in and done by the end of the first week of August. The auxiliary gym was being wired up to be air-conditioned. The metal sofas will be in. With the roof wrapped up that process. New art sinks to be installed. Yep, the high school flooring is complete. Interior, new interior doors will be installed next week or the week after. And the paving is all done. At the middle school, the ICED and the sidewalk between the high school and middle school, on which there's plenty of room for two vehicles across in between there. That's the end of my report. All right.
Thank you, Jeff. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Jeff? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to community and legislative engagement. Jessica, go ahead.
Our July meeting was canceled due to the board's special session on the same night. So our next meeting will be on August 24th at 6:30 PM. We have yet to finalize our agenda, but I think that we will have quite a few items that we can work on related to engaging the community around COVID supports for our school district and our students and families.
Thank you, Jessica. Item 6B, questions for district-level leaders regarding their return-to-work school group reports. I think there are two things that are worth mentioning before we dive into this section of discussion items. One is that I think the reason that we've constructed the agenda this way is to try to ask the questions of our group leaders that we can, and then we'll be able to move through our action items relatively rapidly, although we certainly can have discussion, and those leaders will remain with us through those agenda items in case we have any questions. We really wanted this to be the time of some really good discussion regarding their reports and the action items below. Before we start, I just wanted to make one comment, and that is that I think I can speak for the entire board, and others will undoubtedly reinforce these comments, and that is that we thank these group leaders for their work, and we certainly thank them for their leadership, and ask them to convey our thanks and gratitude for the work of the people who have worked on their task forces as well. So I guess with that, I'd like to throw this agenda item open for questions that board members may have about any of the action items or the work of any of these groups.
Hey, Rod, this is Danny. Just in the interest of making the discussion a little more organized, is there any chance we could take this work group by work group?
Sure, absolutely.
I would appreciate that.
Yep, that's a good suggestion. We'll start with technology. Go ahead.
Then I have a question regarding technology. So item number two talks about technology for webcams and integrated microphones for staff wishing to livestream and/or record videos. Am I correct in saying we haven't really made any decisions around synchronous versus asynchronous learning? Or are we planning on leaving that up to each individual teacher? That's my question around that item.
Thank you, Danny. I appreciate the question. Indeed, our commitment is to provide synchronous learning for kids, both in a large group setting, for example, at the elementary level. Kids might have a morning meeting where they'll start their day together to talk about social-emotional development, and then engage them in some kind of an activity around reading, mathematics, and the like. And then break the kids into smaller groups to provide small-group instruction live time, while concurrently then there might be some additional kinds of supports that the kids will be working on, activities that the kids will be working on in their off time. The amount of screen time is really going to be commensurate with the age of the students. As you might imagine, at the high school, that might be a little bit more than might be a little one in the kindergarten age level. And we're now in the process of just putting our finishing touches on what that might look like in presenting it in the days ahead. But we will have access to cameras in each of our Chromebooks, so that way staff members and students can have that kind of interaction through live-time instruction. There might also be some opportunities whereby teachers might flip it and record their lessons and encourage kids to watch those in the off time. There might even be opportunities where a student might just miss the synchronous learning experience during the school day, and we'll be recording those so that children and their families can watch later on.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions about technology?
This is Leah. I've got a question. So we talked about possibly giving laptops or Chromebooks to kids who might need them. And I know I got a letter from the IC that all the IC kids are getting one. How are we figuring that out at the other grades? Is it just going to be building by building, a survey or something? Or kind of like what we did last time where it was just email us if you need one?
Fantastic question. And as well, as Josh Cataldo, the team leader, begins to queue up, I might add that the district has purchased about 200-plus additional Chromebooks that were already budgeted for this year's cycle. And we made an additional 25 purchases of Chromebooks, or excuse me, additional $25,000 worth of Chromebooks just this past week. Josh Cataldo, I see you on the call, and I know your team gave careful thought to the dissemination of these devices. Might you be able to please speak to that?
Yes, hello. Just to clarify, we have not made the purchase of the additional Chromebooks yet. I'm still working with our vendors on that, but that is the goal. As far as who, what students will need a Chromebook in the buildings, I guess how I've done it is based on need and based on who's communicated to us that they need one. Some of the buildings, from what I understand, the building principals are trying to promote a one-to-one-like environment in their buildings, which if they have the numbers, we'll support them how we have to. We are leaving a lot of the decisions based on this to the site-based teams, the building principals, and the other leaders in the buildings, and we will support them as best we can.
And I know that during the week that our teachers come back to work, we will be asking our staff to help us in distributing not only those items, but as well as textbooks and other materials that families might need as well.
This is Kimberly. I have a question. I didn't see on your sheet anything about internet connectivity, especially in our rural areas. How are we doing on hotspots? Do we have enough of those to go around?
Thank you for that question. I currently have, I would say, probably in the realm of 30 hotspots. Some of them are already distributed to students in need. We did not use all of the hotspots that I got in the spring. So assuming the numbers stay the same with the needs of students, I feel like we should have sufficient hotspots to hand out. If not, then we will act with our vendors through Verizon and try to get access to those devices as they're needed.
I have another question. Item three, talking about the G Suite Enterprise for Education versus the basic G Suite that we currently have. Josh, can you give us an idea of what the difference is between the two? I gather one has more features than the other, but I'd just be curious to know what.
Sure, thank you. Yes, Google has announced a multitude of new features coming. Some of those features are implemented in our current version of G Suite Basic for Education, such as recording meets, you know, the limit on the amount of people that can be in a Google Meet. There's probably a document that somebody could pull up for me that I provided that showed the differences between Enterprise and Basic. Either way, I can probably dig it up. So there's the concept of breakout rooms, from what I understand, and just some other, you know, the recording capability, which from what I understand, some of this is going to be taken away September 30. So Google was nice enough to basically allow us some of the Enterprise features now, all the country for that matter. And they will be, of course, taking those away and charging for those additional features September 30. If you'd like more precise differences between the Basic and Enterprise, I can pull that up right now. I think I have access to that.
Even if it's just after the meeting, that would be fine.
Did that answer your question sufficiently?
It did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Other questions about technology? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to infection and control mitigation. All right, hearing none on infection control mitigation, we'll move to school safety, mental health of students and staff.
I'm sorry, Rod, is it okay for me to say something?
Sure, go ahead.
This is CJ. I just wanted to let you guys know, Pam and I are very open, and anyone is always welcome to email us. So if somebody comes up after the meeting, in the next weeks, months, please don't hesitate to ask. If you have the question, probably somebody else does too.
Thanks a lot, CJ.
Hey, Rod. I'm going to ask that we slow it down just a tiny bit. As I don't know about everybody else, but I've got a lot of notes, so it might take me just a second to regroup for each of these. I have a question about air quality. Can we maybe get an update on where we are with assessing what our capabilities are going to be in terms of HVAC and what the opportunities might be to do any upgrades that might improve airflow in the buildings?
Thank you. Is Dave Reed on the call by chance?
I am.
Dave, can you share with them the discussions we've had with Nami here over the course of the past several months about airflow and the MERV ratings, please?
Yeah, there's a lot of discussion about air filtration. What I can tell you is the level of filters we would need in our system to actually capture the coronavirus because of its really small size. Those types of filters don't fit into our system. We typically run what's called a MERV eight, seven or eight-grade filter, which is pretty much general use. You probably have that in your house. You can upgrade to a MERV 11 or a MERV 13. The bottom line is even the best filter that would fit into our equipment wouldn't capture the coronavirus. So there's not a lot we can do with capturing it. What we've also known is that the more fresh air you can bring into the building, the better. As most people know, most of the windows in the school buildings don't open. And it's by design so that you can have a much more controlled environment. There are some buildings that have a few windows that open, the science rooms in the middle school, the classrooms in the ELC, but after that, it gets pretty skinny where windows can actually open. So that leaves us with altering our HVAC programs to bring in more fresh air. Days like today, we could bring in a ton of fresh air, and everybody would be happy. Last week, when it was hot and humid, there are some limitations on how much fresh air I can bring into the building and maintain the level of dryness and temperature that some people might want. So we will work with our equipment, we'll work with our engineers, and we'll make sure that we have the maximum amount of fresh air that we can bring into the building as possible at all times.
All right. I'm not... Well, let's move to school safety, mental health of students and staff.
I have a question. Item one under needs in terms of support from the Board of Education. It talks about health screeners. So this is something that we've, pre-COVID, talked about and decided against, or at the very least, decided to hold off on because, you know, if we're going to screen kids, we have to make sure that we have systems in place to be able to respond to whatever information comes out of those screeners. Do we feel like we're equipped in that regard?
Brian, are you on the call? Would you like to speak for that, please?
You bet. Thanks for asking that question, Danny. You're right. We've talked about this many times and have been kind of reluctant to doing it. We feel the committee, and this was when I would jump on for a few of these meetings, really felt if there meetings, really felt if there was never a better time to do it and to check in and make sure we're universally checking in with kids, now is the perfect opportunity to start that. And we have to, as a staff, put all hands on deck to make this work and make it successful because we've got to be checking in with kids. And I think the committee really talked about doing, you know, fourth, seventh, and 10th grade, we're not going to be able to do them all at once, we're going to have to stagger it, do fourth grade for a while, have all student services from all buildings be hands on deck to support the fourth graders, then move on to seventh grade, do the same thing, and then move on to 10th grade. But just really felt that now is just the time where we're going to have to make it a top priority.
Thank you.
This is Leah. I have, it's not really a question, it's more of a request. So 1B talks about connecting with families via email and telephone and all of that. And as someone with multiple kids in the district, if there was a way to coordinate those efforts so that as a parent, I don't get four phone calls and four emails and like coordinated a little bit more so it's not super overwhelming for parents of multiples?
Yeah, I respect that for sure. Thanks, thanks for bringing that feedback. And I'll let Megan, as the co-leader of this group, kind of chime in too. Thanks.
I was going to say the same, just that I love that idea and I think it's a great idea. You're not the only parent or caregiver that I've heard that comment from, but it gets overwhelming with students in multiple buildings. So I think that's a great idea for even student services across the district to be able to coordinate and help with that effort to be reaching out to families, but making sure that we're not doing it too much.
This is Jessica. I have a question related to the same item. In talking about regular contact with students, I think we can all agree that building relationships between teachers and adults in the building and the students is a high priority. So when we talk about this regular connections, is it going to be our teachers who are reaching out to our students and what is that going to look like? Or are we talking about mass emails that are going to come once a week to parents sharing resources? You know, both are, both are useful, but I really think we need to work on the individual one-on-one connections and building relationships between teachers and students. And as Brian said, now is definitely the time that we could be doing that. So if someone could just provide a little more detail on that?
This is Sarah. I can jump in on that, and Megan can kind of fill in if I miss anything. But absolutely, I think one of the things that we recognize is that not one format works for everybody. And so wanting to have that be more open and, and trying to meet the needs of different individuals and what's going to work for them, and definitely wanting to have kind of a larger umbrella as well as that personal touch. We couldn't agree more that those relationships and building them from the beginning with new teachers and everything is going to be extremely important.
So are we providing then our teachers with sort of, for lack of a better description, sort of a protocol or a conferring structure, you know, to give them guidance on, you know, questions and conversation starters to help them guide conversations with their students?
I think that's a great idea. I know Megan had alluded a little bit to some tools that they have used at their level and really thinking about that there might be different questions at different building levels too. So again, wanting to get input from those building level individuals about what do they think will work for them as well. So kind of saying, here is kind of what we were looking to do, and then in making sure we're getting that voice from the building level to help us determine some of that. But yeah, I think that's a wonderful idea that if we can have some templated, more informal, so we have the mental health formal piece that we're talking about, screener piece, and then looking at how can we do some of those more informal check-ins and really tailor it more to the individual as well as that grade level.
And then my one last comment about this is, you know, for our students in our younger grades, they have one, mostly one dedicated teacher. So it's, you know, it's easier ideally to develop that relationship, but then for our middle and our high students who have a very, you know, variety of teachers, who is, which teacher is it going to be that takes it on? And then, you know, ensuring that we don't have a student that gets missed under the radar because, you know, chemistry didn't call, but math thought chemistry did, you know what I mean? Like, how do we ensure that no one slips through for the older kids who have multiple teachers?
Do you want me to speak a little to that on what I saw like in the building levels? So back in the spring, I believe at the middle and high school, what I saw them do was create some sort of referral system. I don't know if it was an email or a Google form at those levels, because I'm K-5. And they had just this big spreadsheet going as the chemistry teacher would say, hey, I haven't gotten an assignment from this student. And maybe math teacher said they were supposed to join a small group, didn't see them, then it would go to student services to kind of do that follow-up and just see what was going on. Again, to minimize those phone calls when those students have seven teachers that could be reaching out. It instead was a student services member reaching out just to see what we could put in place to help that student access what was already available. K-5, pretty similar. We had Google forms that a staff member could fill out if they weren't hearing from a student or if they were concerned about a student or a family, and student services would reach out usually within the same day.
And I seem to remember at the high school level, they have the staff's time, the student-to-teacher assistance time. That is an opportunity for individual staff members to have built deeper, more profound relationships with kids and be that point of contact. Additional supports have been provided, but I must tell you, I think that there's additional training we can be providing those frontline individuals, and I know that's part of the efforts that are underfoot right now.
And then just along with the, the high school kind of equivalency at the middle school, that would be the daily homeroom as well as Viking hour, and stat time as well. And then it's followed by the student services team through a referral process.
Yeah, I guess my, my one final thought is just that, you know, individual relationships, whether it's, it's now or when we return to normal school, are so important, whether it's a student that's in crisis and need or a student that just needs regular guidance, you know, as they're trying to figure out what to do. So anything that we can do to, to develop relationships, I think is really important and should be built in.
And Jessica, piggyback off that, something else that I was thinking of, especially for the little kids who only have that really one teacher that they deal with, having paraprofessionals from their building or food service workers or other people that they know that they can, like, that they have a meeting with on Tuesday, and they're like, hey, it's Mrs. so-and-so from recess, I love her. And it gives them other connections that they're, that they're longing and missing. That was just another thing I heard, especially from my little people.
I have a question about letter H under item one, about dedicating time for mental health literacy. In addition to everything we've been talking about, maintain, building and maintaining relationships, relationships with kids, I think this is also really important. And I was wondering, Brian, if you could just talk a little bit about what that might look like? You know, is that something that's going to be done during stat and Viking hour and homeroom? I'm just, my thought would be that there probably needs to be some structure and regularity to it, or else I could see it easily getting lost in the shuffle with everything else that everyone's going to be dealing with.
Yeah, thanks, Danny. I appreciate that. Megan, do you want to jump into that, around the discussion of that group?
Sure. So yes, number one, I would like to say, I apologize for the typo that is now just highlighted for 158 people to see. I missed a word in that one. This one was left intentionally very vague, again, because how this can work at the different buildings is so different. So K-2, this might happen in their morning meetings, then different teams might be able to help come up with morning meeting templates regarding mental health and social emotional learning that is age-appropriate for six-year-olds. And what high schoolers are going to need is way different, and how that can look is so different. High school, our committee talked a lot about that being during their stat time. Middle school, I think Viking hour, homeroom, we said potentially even like health class, that could be a good time for it in middle school. And then at the IC, that would be one that we might need to make some changes on. We aren't formally doing morning meetings this year at the IC, but if we could provide teachers with some lessons, they could supplement what our guidance counselor is putting out in his lessons. So just ensuring that there is social emotional learning and mental health literacy in whatever format, however, we're pushing out all the academic, that we're also pushing out some mental health literacy for students too.
Other questions on school safety and mental health? We'll move on, school libraries.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment. I just appreciate how detailed their plan is. It was clearly a lot of thought went into it.
Thank you for that. It really is our priority to be able to get resources into the kids' hands this year. Anticipating that at least some of our students would be learning virtual, all of the libraries used a portion of this past school year's budget to supplement our digital resources. So I think we're in a good position with our first quarter of virtual learning. But we also want to find a way to get print resources to our kids as well.
Any other questions about school libraries? We'll move on to special education. Questions about special education?
This is Leah. I have a question. So as part of our plus, will these, will these students have the ability to like sign up for extra help, or will they automatically get help on, you know, if they have specific dates and times that they're in the building so that we can kind of stagger it? Do we have an idea of what that'll look like?
Yeah, that's, that's, so I'll, I'll start out by just saying, first off, we had a great team, and I just want to thank every member of the team. I know that I've seen quite a few that are on this meeting today. They've really done a lot of work from a parent perspective as well as teacher, paraprofessional perspective, related services perspective. We kind of had so many different people represented, and including getting other people's feedback and bringing them back. And so I just wanted to thank them. In fact, we're continuing to meet this next week. So we're still meeting as a group too, because we have lots to figure out, right? And that, exactly what you asked, Leah, is one of the questions we're figuring out. Tomorrow, I'm meeting with every director in Dane County, talking about what is our, what is everyone's plus going to look like? And then what can ours look like? So what is the criteria for it that we as a district are going to have? And then figuring out how to make it work within our buildings, and that includes transportation, staff, health and safety reasons on top of it. Because we know that even students who would technically maybe be ones who would qualify have medical conditions that aren't going to allow them to be in the building. And so then if things aren't working, what are we even going to do in addition to it? So the plus can look maybe face-to-face for a lesson or two, but it also might just really be like, how are we making our instruction better? How are we making our platform stronger? How are we making virtual even stronger? And so that's the big structure of what we're doing to try to look at different platforms, programming, direct instruction, hands-on activities to make things better for all of our kids that we're trying to serve.
I guess I have one, one more question, and it may not be one that can be answered right now. The last item talks about the potential for allocating additional staff if necessary. Do you have a plan for how, how you may go about acquiring additional staff if it's necessary? Because I would imagine that's not something you can do overnight.
Yeah, it's, it's not something to do overnight, and it's, it's one of the areas in special education that's always a hard component at the beginning of the year, right? Because you always have students who move in who might have additional needs to be able to help service. And so there's lots of different ways that we look at when kids come in that are new to us and how we can increase funding, especially in the special education grant world. We're hoping that this is, that's not going to be the case. But it very like, you know, you just never know what's going to kind of come out and what needs are going to be. And so we just wanted to put that down as a, as an action item, as a recommendation that something might be coming up, we need to look at it. And I'll work directly with Scott, the Director, Assistant Superintendent of Business, to make sure that our finances are in order and we're kind of set moving forward. One of the other components, just kind of in addition to that, DPIs just started to give guidance on a document called Additional Services. So what that, what that really means is that if there was regression of a skill and we're not able to recruit it, so that there's a group of kids who are further behind and we're not able to catch them up because of the closure that's already happened, we might have to provide additional services. So next summer to provide more speech and language therapy, more additional services, and that's where that could come into place too. It's not necessarily during the school year, but maybe in the summer or additional time where we would add additional services and need additional staff to help support the work that our current staff are already doing.
Other questions about special education? We'll move on to English learners. Any questions about English learners? All right. We'll move to gifted and talented. Questions about gifted and talented?
This is Jessica. I have some concerns about the gifted and talented program. I have no doubt that it was well thought out, but I'm concerned about the, some of the activities that are called on, the, the hands-on learning, the, the peer-to-peer academic pairing, some of the extra things that are being identified, I feel like they should be available to all of our students. All of our students are going to need these opportunities and these things that are being provided as additional resources seem like things that during a virtual learning environment, every single one of our students are going to need. So I just wanted to raise a concern about that. My other concern is about the clustering. I know we talked about it in the English learners recommendations, which we didn't talk about in there. I do find it a little bit more appropriate. When we're talking about clustering gifted and talented students, I worry about equity. I think we can all agree that students learn best when they're exposed to a variety of abilities, and clustering our gifted and talented students in one group is concerning to me. So I just wanted to raise the So I just wanted to raise those concerns.
Other questions or comments on gifted and talented?
This is Christine Parley, can you hear me?
Go ahead, Christine.
Okay, thank you for having me. Jessica, I did want to mention just the concern about clustering. When we mention clustering, it's to ensure that, you know, our gifted and talented or identified students have one or two other peers in their class with them that are at their level when we can make that happen. Because if they are way advanced beyond most of the other peers in their class, often they get called upon in different situations and, or called upon to kind of be a leader or work in different ways and they're not able to always have peers, academic peers that can keep them challenged. And so when I'm using the word clustering, it's more talking about, you know, maybe two or three kids in a classroom together instead of, you know, one on their own. Does that make sense?
That does make sense. And making sure students are paired up is much different to me than clustering all of our students together. So thank you for the clarification. And I don't think that, I don't, I don't want to sound negative, I don't think that these things are all fantastic, I just think that they are fantastic and should be applied to all of our students.
Right, and one of our discussions that we had in our work group is a lot of the enrichment programs that we have within our district are not necessarily open only to identified students, but to students that are ready for that next level of challenge. And so being like, I guess, the coordinator of the programming and wanting to make sure that we can reach as many kids as possible, but looking more towards peers and community members and things like that so that we build wider support for kids that need enrichment and challenge across all areas, not necessarily specifically the identified students, but students who are ready for that next level of challenge in whatever area it might be.
In that kind of same vein as Jessica, so we talk about whatever, current needs, board support, number two talks about having the talented and gifted students be able to be part of the plus. And I'm not opposed to that, but I, I think we also need to catch, I mean, I think, we need to figure out who should be part of the plus, but I think every, I don't want it to become like a talented and gifted and, and special education students are the only ones who get the plus. I just want us to be a little aware of that, that there's those kids in the middle who might just need a little extra help.
Totally agreed, absolutely. And that was just our way of advocating for this group of students, too, that we don't know what the plus actually looks like yet and we're still waiting on guidance for that. But in the event that we need extra support for those students, that we can find a way to make that happen.
Other questions about gifted and talented? We'll move on to co and extracurricular. Talia?
Hi, everybody.
Hey.
I have, I have a question. And I totally get that you're not, we're not going to have the same answer for each co-curricular activity, but I'm just wondering if you could maybe give us some examples of what this might look like for band versus football versus cross-country versus choir and any number of other clubs that we might have?
What the virtual would look like?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, you know, there, I guess in my world right now, there are two different groups. Sports is one of them that I can't give you an answer yet. That seems to be my answer for everything right now with sports. We're still waiting for a little bit of direction from the WIAA. Their Board of Control will meet in, on August 14th. I had another meeting today with the Badger Conference Athletic Directors. We're really hoping that the Dane County Athletic Directors can come up with a plan so that all of our students, all of our fall athletes, I should say, get some type of opportunity this school year. So that's one part of it. And then when it comes to, to music and everything, you know, Will Jansen was on the committee with me. He, you know, he, they're already working on how they can make that work, they're already talking about how they can get instruments into hands of all of their students, you know, talking about how we can get some small group instruction going on virtually. And, and that's why I don't know if, on the second page of that document, you know, we understand as a committee that what we're, what we're recommending is something that reflects what's happening right now with the academic part of our school district. Our, our goal though is at some point, we really want to start getting small groups together, getting kids in-person activities. But, you know, that, that last conversation that you had with, about the gifted and talented and what the virtual plus looks like, we, we understand and we certainly don't want to step on anybody's toes. We know right now that academics and, you know, the virtual plus hasn't been made clear. So please know that we are not recommending anything like that right away. But at some point, we certainly want to get some small group together for music. I've already been working with the advisors for all of the co-curriculars in our high school on what that first day looks with freshmen, how we get freshmen involved, things like that. So Danny, I know that that probably was way more than you're asking, but yeah, it is, it is really hard to put them all in one group because you can't. I've got, you know, probably four or five different subcategories of groups that I'm working with right now to figure out what that would look like. But overall, the biggest goal is we have to get our kids involved. And I know that virtually that's going to be a little bit of a struggle, but just in reaching out to my co-curricular advisors already, I started, I started that in June. You know, what does that look like when we start back? And, and our advisors are amazing, they're ready to go, they're ready to start planning some virtual activities. I asked them, you know, what does a normal school year look like with September, October? And, you know, a lot of that is just, you know, first couple of meetings, get to know the kids, have, you know, elect your officers. So luckily, a lot of our co-curriculars, those type of groups will be okay. They're already planning their virtual meetings, they ended the school year, right, with virtual meetings. So I'm comfortable with that group. You know, sports is a whole nother monster right now. And then our biggie, too, is reaching out to those freshmen, we really want to get those, those new students in here and, and make sure that they know all of the different activities that are available, available for them. So lots, lots to get ready in the next few weeks, but it's, it's going to be great. We've got amazing leaders here that are ready to jump in and do anything.
About co and extracurriculars? Hearing none, we'll move on, professional development. Questions or comments about professional development? Questions or comments about professional development? Hearing none, we'll move on to transportation. Any questions or comments about transportation? Hearing none, we'll move to 4K program. Any questions or comments about the 4K program? Nicole, how are you?
I'm well, thank you.
Anything on your, your mind for the board as you think about the work of your, your group?
No, you know, I think I was on a 4K connections call today and 57% of the folks who took the, or 57 of the folks on the call are planning on going back with their 4K programs in some, in some fashion. And then another 27% hybrid. So I think that was reassuring for me to see. And I just, I want to give a shout out to our site partners who, they've been doing this work since March of keeping our little kids safe and keeping their employees safe. And so, you know, I know there's a lot of fear and trepidation about the virus, as there should be, but I think our community has shown that we can keep our little ones safe and provide them that face-to-face play-based education that we know serves them best. So I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Questions or comments from Nicole?
This is Leah, I've got, I've got a couple. So there will be a 4K virtual option for those who would like it?
Yes, as of right now, we have about 34 families who, for whatever reason, whether it be family health situations or childcare logistics or whatnot, have requested to participate in the virtual. So we still need to figure out what that is going to look like. We have some meetings scheduled this week pending the outcome of this meeting to start nailing those decisions down.
And I have one more question. Did you happen to discuss in your call at all the new study that came out over the weekend? And you might not have even seen it, I don't know, I saw it yesterday, I think. But there's two studies out now that say that young children not only transmit COVID effectively, but are the major drivers for it. And that kids younger than five can hold up to 100 times more viruses in their nose than other children, which is super gross to think about. But I'm just wondering if that's something that all has come up on the calls and if that at all changes your thoughts on the recommendation to offer in-person 4K?
Thanks for that, yes, I did, I did see that study, I looked at it pretty closely. It wasn't from, if you're speaking of the Lurie Children's Hospital study where they found that the viral load in children under five was greatly, was more significant than, than older kids and adults. They did not make any link. In fact, I think it was that study or perhaps another study that said that it didn't really met out, I mean, that's not what we're seeing. Historically, there have been daycares open since, since the country shut down back in March and they're really not seeing evidence of those little kids being transmitters. You know, in terms of the viral load, there's some supposition among some people that the reason they have so much viral load is because they're not shedding it like those that are extremely contagious do. So I think there'll be a lot more coming out on that. But I think looking at the history of, of what has happened within our daycares across the country makes me feel confident that, A, we don't, there are still things we certainly don't know and we're learning, but we do have history of what has been effective and even within our own community of keeping kids safe in our site-based environments.
Thank you, Nicole. Any other questions on 4K?
This is Kimberly, I have a question about number three under proposed recommendations. I'm not quite sure if you're saying that you're recommending that we physically move nurses and nursing staff to the 4K sites or just that they're available to help the 4K sites?
So one of the things that we're going to put in place is temperature checks for kiddos as they're coming in. That's one of the recommendations and sites have already been doing this, but as they have more than just their childcare folks coming in, we want to be on hand until systems are in place for them and they can take that over. But, you know, the first couple of weeks of a 4K school year is, there's a lot going on and it's a little bit chaotic, but, so we just want to be there to support them, get those systems in place, especially since there aren't K-12 students in the building. It would be a nice, I mean, it's not a necessity, they could certainly do it without us, but if, if we have the staff to be able to support them, that'll just make things go smoother.
Thank you, Nicole. Other questions on 4K? If not, then what I'd like to suggest that we do is if you have an outstanding question for any, in any of these categories, in any, for any of these work groups that we take care of these before we move on. So if you have an outstanding question from one of the, from one of the work groups or for one of the work groups that we've already discussed, why don't we, why don't we handle those now? All right? Hearing none, and of course, we can handle them during discussion in items seven through J. But at any rate, let's move on to item six C, COVID-19 update. Dr. Salerno?
Well, good evening again, everyone. As you can clearly see, there is a reason why these professionals were selected to lead each of these subcommittees. I want to again personally thank each of these fantastic professionals for the leadership they've shown and also extend a note of gratitude for the number of parents as well as students and medical professionals who gave graciously of their time in order to help us sort through the many complex issues that we confront. President Heiss suggested at the closure of his last meeting that we begin to think about what is the metrics by which we're going to bring students and staff back into the schoolhouse. And because I had a few extra hours on my hands this weekend watching the Chicago Cubs, world champion Chicago Cubs, by the way, win a number of games, I ended up putting together a little PowerPoint that some of you might see inside the board docs here for you tonight. Mind if I share that with you so that we can talk a little bit about that? Truth of the matter is, is that this is something that many, many school districts around the region are focusing on. Where do we go when it comes time to think about reopening our schools? And so tonight, I called this a gradual reopening plan, it's in draft mode, no pride in authorship. It's something that many school districts are using, as I say, around the region and I thought maybe I'd just take some time to walk you through at least my tentative visioning on this. First of all, what are the facts? What do we know? We know that these are the things that Public Health Madison Dane County is requiring of our school districts. And this is laid out in their order number eight. We also know that our dedicated teachers miss their students and they want to return to school and they want to do so safely. Our teachers, in my opinion, are still the same people we called heroes about a month ago and before then. While school communities all around the nation right now are undergoing courageous conversations, we must not forget two things, if you don't mind, please. The work of teaching and our support staff is hard and noble work. I spoke with several parents throughout the past four or five months and they've all told me they never thought teaching could be so difficult. Secondly, we are in a pandemic and we cannot assume that this is business as usual. It's not business as usual, it's all hands on deck. Disagreements and disputes only serve really to direct our energy away from what's really important in our common mission. Thank you to each and every single one of you for joining me in providing as normal an experience for our children as possible so that we can do so as quickly as possible. This is how great our parents are. At the conclusion of one recent online chat I held with families, one parent asked me, really, what do you need us to do? How can we help support the need us to do? How can we help support the effort? And we asked if they could remember to teach their kids how to use their masks, hold them accountable for the physical distancing side of the house, and explicitly teach handwashing. We can get there. I just know we can. And so really, I see four steps in this plan to return us back to the gradual reopening of school. First, the first step, of course, is one that's already been approved, and that is in green here on your television screen, a full virtual instruction plus targeted in-person supports that we've been, we've been connecting about here this evening. Step two, then, would really be applicable staff returning to the buildings. The third is to gradually bring us into a hybrid virtual learning environment, limiting in-person attendance to those who wish to have it. And then lastly, oh, we all long for this day, a traditional in-person attendance period. Let's take a look at where we are with regard to our ability to move from step one to step two. In green indicates that we're already there. In yellow means that we're working to get there. And in red, it means we've got some work to do. And so you'll see that Public Health Madison Dane County does allow right now for us to return back to school within the parameters that I identified in that very first slide. And we are, thanks to the great efforts of our human resources department, begun the effort of training our staff on what those health and safety protocols are. I'm pleased to tell you that we have a number of staff members who have volunteered their time, teachers, I want to say about 80 of them, have volunteered their time to participate in a number of evening trainings that are going to take place this weekend next. This demonstrates the commitment that they have in order to learn how best to teach in a virtual and blended learning environment. And then the fourth piece I think that's critical to our evolution to get to step two is for all students and staff to have access to that instructional technology. And Josh Cataldo spoke so thoughtfully about that earlier this evening. But how do we get from step two to step three, whereby our staff have returned to the building and we're moving into a step three hybrid virtual learning model? I don't think it's in our district's best interest to start developing criteria that's separate from Public Health Madison Dane County. When we start looking at different metrics, we then confuse people as to what the expectation is. We're not epidemiologists. We're not medical providers. We are folks who are carrying out the important mission of quality public education. We must look to the leaders who have established and have background in these areas. And that's why I'm proposing that we use the metrics that you see here on the screen tonight. We already have in yellow, we're kind of in the middle point of establishing those internal benchmarks and then also identifying the safety protocols and the aforementioned training that we discussed. But we are currently in the red when it comes to a number of these areas listed under the metrics that's been established by Forward Dane and the Public Health Dashboard. I'll be pushing out this PowerPoint presentation to families, and certainly with your feedback and questions and concerns, bring them to us. And then lastly, draft in our criteria here is moving from the hybrid virtual model to step four, which would be a full return to traditional in-person attendance. I suggest that we await the feedback from Public Health Madison Dane County to do just that, and making certain that we're continuing to be progressive in our teachings and following of our safety protocols. So what could be the timeline for us to move from step to step? Obviously, we looked at Public Health Madison Dane County to do that. But I envision in the event that we are able to move from a full virtual to a hybrid model, it's going to take us some time to turn that faucet back on again. It takes a lot more to ramp up than it does to ramp down. If criteria are still met, we absolutely want to be able to bring our kids back to school. And I'm grateful to this Board of Education for their forward thinking. In late September, early October, the Board will be having some conversations about what that metric is, whatever's been established and determining where we are against that metric, so that we families and school district employees can begin shifting their, and pivoting their, their efforts in order to help kids in this environment as much as possible. So what could be committed to tonight? If the Board so chose, so felt as though it was appropriate to do so, we could begin targeting step two, if appropriate to do so, virtual learning in the buildings as much as possible. We recognize that that's fraught with some fear and also concern. But we believe we have systems in place that if, if the Board felt it was appropriate to do that, we would work to get to a yes in an evolutionary way. And then we could commit to reviewing the public health data weekly for a possible movement to step three. Every single Monday night about 5:30, a log comes out from the good folks at Public Health Madison Dane County to give us an update as to where things are. While on a call early today, our Director of Student Services, Brian Johnson, informed me that Public Health Madison Dane County has seen the numbers continue to go down, but they have now plateaued to about anywhere between 30 to 40 new cases daily. They do not have any intent at all to make any changes or to walk back their plan at all because the numbers and the data just don't permit for that. And we could also tonight commit to providing at least that four-week pivot time to provide notice to families and to our staff in order to move us forward. And what could be considered as soon as the August 17th Board meeting? A consideration of the plan that I've laid out for you here tonight, approval of the gradual reopening framework. I do want to make certain that we gather feedback from our staff and our community on this framework. It's important to President Heiss's comments, we need to establish what that metric is now so that we're not fumbling with it later when the key decisions need to be made. And so I'm committing to working with our medical advisor, every district has one, as well as the, the folks from Public Health Madison Dane County to make certain that this plan is in keeping with their vision. I also want to take some time to just preface with the Board, some thinking I have around one of the agenda topics tonight. And this has to do with, what do we do with staff members whose normal jobs, if you will, paraprofessionals, custodians, bus drivers, and the like, when we're in a virtual model, what do we do with those good folks? They're critical to the success of our organization. And some might say at easy first glance, that it would be reasonable to assume that layoffs would be appropriate. However, I believe it is a mistake for individuals to assume laying off these positions for a short period of time would not be without cost, both physically and intangibly. There are unintended consequences. From a fiscal perspective, of course, unemployment insurance would apply for those who qualify. In addition, the potential number of individuals receiving those benefits would likely increase the district's unemployment insurance costs when it comes time for renewal. More importantly, however, is the strong likelihood these dedicated employees would need to seek alternative employment in order to meet their own financial obligations. This would adversely impact the district's ability to ramp up our full return to school. Here's an example. Finding bus drivers, you know, you've heard me say this at nauseam, finding bus drivers continues to be a concern. It requires significant recruiting and training and even state licensing. If those individuals elected to leave, the impact on our families could not, in my opinion, be fully calculated. It might lead to things like staggered start times, reduced services, extended timings on buses for our kids, and maybe even double routing. That in itself is an expensive proposition. This concern is not exclusive to our drivers. Rather, the administrative team proposed developing plans that would permit purposeful and worthwhile work to occur for these important members of our team. Paraprofessionals, we are going to need you. We're going to need you in ways that may not be what you're accustomed to, but we're going to need you nonetheless. School nutrition employees, you continue to offer an absolutely amazing service to our families, and we may need to use you in ways that we've not used you in the past. So for those who just quickly look at this and say, this is an easy decision, lay off, I challenge you to think a little bit more long-term and the potential impact it might have on our ability to recover these amazing and dedicated employees at a time whereby we could be shifting back into the schoolhouse, hopefully sooner rather than later. Thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to share my insights tonight.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Steve. Any questions or comments for Steve? Questions or comments for Steve?
This is Jessica. I have two questions. Related to your reopening plan, thank you for putting it together. We definitely need one. My one question is related to, you said that when we get to an appropriate point to consider moving to the next step, we would have to stay there for four weeks, which makes sense to me. So does that mean that we had said we would reevaluate every quarter, but this seems to say we should record, we should assess weekly and then possibly change at a four-week interval that doesn't match up with the quarters, which would be fine. I just want to be clear.
Thank you for the question, Jessica. I do anticipate the Board, we would not make a recommendation that would be anything different than the end of the first quarter. Those decisions, though, as you might imagine, need to be made at least four weeks out. So I'm thinking that on or around the last meeting of the month, the Community Legislative Engagement Team in September might put together a survey and then use those results to help the full Board understand where people's heads are at, both staff and parents, and then make a decision as to whether or not the metrics that have been established by Public Health Madison Dane County allow us to come back. If it's not then for that quarter, then maybe we look at another incremental chunk of time. Maybe it's the holiday season, right after the holiday break, although that's not quite the, the full second quarter. Maybe there's additional time in there that would allow us to think about coming back around the first of the year. So evolutionary, not revolutionary.
No, that makes sense. My other question is if we could talk a little bit more about step two, about the staff returning to the building. I, I sort of felt like we were already at step two. So if you could just talk a little bit about that.
Thank you so much. I don't believe we're quite at step two yet. I believe we have some work on our hands, and that's really through continuing to train our dedicated and loving staff to make certain that they have the tools and equipment necessary in order to carry out their important work in the buildings. I do think if this is a priority for the Board, we absolutely can get to a yes on this. It just means that we're going to need everyone to be all hands on deck on this. I think we've done a lot in order to get our staff trained as to what those protocols are, and the procedures have been established, but it's about educating and preparing for them to, to come back.
Other questions or comments for Steve? If there are no further questions or comments for Steve, we'll move on. All right, item seven, action items, item seven A, School Safety and Mental Health of Students and Staff Work Group, a consideration of a motion to consider amending the Student Dress Code Policy 443.1. We obviously do not have all seven of us, so we won't vote, but we can certainly have a discussion or people can make comments.
Board members, if you know, any order from the Public Health Madison Dane County serves in essence as something that's a law. And so this, see, the, the policy that's been established, order number eight, supersedes that of Board of Education policy. Nonetheless, we felt it was important to update, one of the recommendations coming out of the committee was to update the Board's policy on dress code to reflect the fact that individuals must wear these face coverings due to the pandemic. And of course, in the event that someone is unable to do that, we obviously want to be responsive to that as well. So that's really the gist of what's being proposed here. And to President Heiss's point tonight, we can't take a vote as we are, to our Board members tonight. But likely would want to return that if at all possible for the Board's consideration on August the 17th, please, and thank you.
I have, this Leah, I just have a quick question. Should we limit it just to face coverings, or should we make it a little broader to be any PPE in case something comes out and they decide face shields are now the thing we all have to wear? Or I saw goggles over the weekend. I don't know. So would it be, make sense to make it more broad?
We certainly can do that. Absolutely. Brian Johnson and his team did a really nice job with this. Brian, if it's the will of the Board, then we can go ahead and update this to reflect that.
Sounds great. Thank you. And then just one other thing, too. At, at the bottom, we did notice, I know that Steve also did mention kind of the, the student's health piece, but also there is kind of that clarification about students with disabilities. I've had a lot of discussions with parents recently. The expectation is going to be that everybody wears a face covering. We're going to try really hard to make that happen for everyone. But we do know that we have some students, due to their disability, it's going to be very hard for them to keep one on all day long for the entire time they're in the building. And we're going to try different strategies. We're going to keep trying. We're going to keep making an effort. But ultimately, we know that there's some kids based on high sensory need, high, you know, all of those components are not going to be able to wear a mask all day long. So we did make that clarification at the bottom as well.
Further questions or comments on seven A? All right, hearing none, we will bring this back on August 17th with changes that Brian and his team will make. Item seven B, Gifted and Talented Work Group, Consider a Motion to Revise the MHASD Advanced Learning Program Plan.
Mr. Heiss, this has to do with how legal about enrolling students in the gifted and talented services during a pandemic environment. One of the recommendations that was made from our gifted and talented group.
Can the Chair entertain, depending upon what the Board thinks, a motion to revise the MHASD Advanced Learning Program Plan?
This is Leah. Motion to approve.
Leah has moved. Is there a second? Jeff has seconded a motion to revise the MHASD Advanced Learning Program Plan. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the MHASD Advanced Learning Program Plan is revised. Item seven C, Co- and Extracurricular Work Group, Consider a Motion Which Permits the District's Full Slate of Co-Curricular Athletic Programming to Proceed in a Virtual Environment Until Further Notice. So Jeff has moved.
Second, Kimberly.
And Kimberly has seconded a motion that would permit the district's full slate of co-curricular athletic programming to proceed in a virtual environment until further notice. Is there any further discussion?
I wonder if it would make sense to include something in the motion around, you know, pending new information from WIAA or to be revisited, you know, at a particular point in time, or something like that.
I agree. Same thought.
There is, there is a time, there is a timeframe on it now. We could, we could substitute out a timeframe that, that someone would like to make, but right now it's until further notice. So if you wanted to limit that, if you wanted to limit that, that in time, I guess that would be the part of this motion to amend.
Personally, I think that's a good phrase to use since, as we've discussed, the co-curriculars do cover such a breadth in sports, music, et cetera.
And as part of our And as part of our graduated step plan that I just prepared for everyone tonight, rest assured, we will be continuing our efforts to communicate with other school districts, Public Health Madison Dane County on this topic, Danny. I don't want you to worry that we're just going to let it be. It's important we stay on top of this. Thank you for being so thoughtful as always.
So do I understand correctly that the motion is not going to be amended? Is that correct? Okay, thank you. Jeff has moved and Kimberly has seconded a motion that would permit the district's full slate of co-curricular and athletic programming to proceed in a virtual environment until further notice. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the district's full slate of co-curricular and athletic programming will proceed in a virtual environment until further notice. Item 7D, the 4K Program Work Group. Consider a motion which permits district support staff to assist our 4K community partner sites as appropriate until further notice.
So moved.
Was that you, Danny?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you. Danny moved and Jeff has seconded a motion that permits the district's support staff to assist our 4K community partner sites. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the district's support staff is now permitted to support our 4K community partner sites as appropriate until further notice. Item 7E, Consideration of a Motion That Permits 4K Partner Sites to Continue Preschool Services Unabated Until Further Notice.
So moved.
Danny has moved. Second. And Jeff has seconded a motion that permits the 4K partner sites to continue preschool services unabated until further notice. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion will say aye.
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 Those opposed, those opposed, no.
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 I'm a aye. So the ayes have it, the motion carries, and a 4K community partner sites will be permitted to continue preschool services unabated until further notice. Number 7F, Consideration of a Motion to Approve the Annual Meeting Agenda and Preparation Plan.
Good evening again, board members. As we prepare for next week's important meeting, we continue to consult with our legal counsel with regard to how it go about hosting an annual meeting in a COVID-19 pandemic environment. You will see a memo that I've drafted out to you and to the public that speaks to the steps that we will take in order to mitigate any impact on those who are in attendance at that meeting. We've been advised that only those people who attend the meeting in person and wish to speak may do so only if they're in person. However, we felt that the meeting is so important that we would at least provide a feed for those individuals to join the meeting as some are doing here yet tonight. And there is a system in place, if you look at that memo that I've created under item number 11. We're asking so that we can keep on track with the start time of the meeting at 6:00 PM. We're asking people to please begin their stream by at least 5:55 PM. We'll have two streams like we do tonight. Last week, as you know, when the board met, we met our maximum of 250 participants. Tonight, we're not near that. But we did want to prepare for two tracks, one that would be an all audio and an all video stream that allows up to 500 people to participate. But again, at the feedback of our, of our attorneys, we've been told that only those people in attendance personally would be able to vote, make motions, and speak. And then you will see the agenda for that evening as well in board docs.
Motion to approve, Kimberly.
Kimberly has made a motion and Jeff has seconded the motion to approve the annual meeting agenda and preparation plan. Is there any further discussion?
Right there, sweetie.
Pardon me? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the annual meeting agenda and preparation plan are approved. Item 7G, Consider Revision to the 2020-2021 School Calendar.
Mr. President, this is another example of us just trying to catch up to some decisions that were made last week. One of those has to do with the calendar. We do anticipate continuing to have school Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday really being a day for those personal check-ins for the advisory periods to occur. Additional supplemental instruction Thursday, Friday with continued full synchronous learning as well. And we just wanted to update the calendar for our families.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Jeff beat you to it, Leah. Would you like to second Jeff's motion?
Sure, I will second Jeff's motion.
Jeff has moved and Leah has seconded a motion that would, would cause revisions to the 2020-2021 school calendar to be made. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed will say no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the revisions to the 2020-2021 school calendar are approved. Item 7H, Consideration of a Motion Revising School Fees for the 2020-2021 School Year.
Thank you. As we're preparing to set out our next level of online registration for our families, we began to look at our school fee structure that was previously approved by the board and understand that what we knew back in March when we first asked the board to take action on this, we now know may not necessarily be able to come to fruition. I'm using examples like ban fees and the like. And so you can see in board docs tonight, a number of fees I'm proposing that the board please place on hold because it's not a service or a benefit that our community is going to enjoy as a result. And there's no need to, to provide or accept payment for families where it may not be something we're able to deliver on.
Steve, I have a quick question. This is Leah. So we have the sixth grade student lock as a hold, but we don't have the ninth through 12th grade student lock as a hold? And I'm assuming that that would also be something that would be on hold?
Yes, please, and thank you. I'm sorry about that. I must have missed that.
There's a lot of things to look at. It's all good.
Yeah, so if someone would be willing to consider a motion, save that mistake I made, yes, please.
Motion to approve with the addition of the ninth through 12th grade lock on hold.
Is there a second?
This is Jessica, I second it.
Jessica has offered a second. Leah has moved and Jessica has seconded a motion that would revise the school fees for the 2020-2021 school year. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor will say aye.
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 Opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the school fees for the 2020-2021 school year have been revised. Item 7I, Consideration of a Motion to Direct Applicable Staff to Report to Their Respective Buildings for the Purpose of Instructional Delivery During the First Quarter of the 2020-2021 School Year.
So I'm just going to make a comment, and that is my preference is that as soon as possible, we have as many of our educators in the buildings as possible for a variety of reasons. But if I understood Dr. Salerno, he doesn't feel like we're there, and so I will defer on that.
I would like to add that we have repeatedly said that in our current era, a need for flexibility. And I think that this issue is applicable to that. I think, like Danny just said, it would be optimal to have teachers in the building if it is appropriate, but I don't think that we should require it.
I think what I struggle with is, as a general operating principle, as a general operating procedure, I think the, the motion makes, makes sense, but I think that there should be flexibility at the, at the building level to deal with situations as they may need to be dealt with. So I think there's a, there's a combination of things that are, that are winding up that have me a little bit concerned. And, and that is this, this notion that we're, that we're not quite there in terms of a phase two. But we need to pass, we need to pass this, this motion. And, and it doesn't seem to give us the flexibility underneath the motion to, to do what might need to be done at the building level where, where typically I think these kinds of decisions should be, should be made.
So much relates to the subjects that each instructor is handling in addition to their own personal health history. If I'm reading this motion correctly, it sounds like a blanket motion to direct all teaching staff back. Am I understanding that correctly?
Applicable staff. And what would be determined applicable would include a number of different variables. One of them being, of course, any kinds of accommodations that were requested through the process that was established back in June and completed this past July. One of them would be, just as you suggested, it might have to do with the content area. Might have to do with professional development training. This much is true, and I know each of you in your hearts believes this because I know how much you care about our staff. I know this based upon all the conversations I have with each and every single one of you. And you know how professional our staff are. You know how dedicated they are. I see many cars in our parking lots on Saturdays and Sundays. So you, you don't need me to tell you that we definitely get a great deal for our money when it comes to our staff. I do wonder if it would be helpful for us to have some conversation with our individual staffs, as Mr. Heiss has just suggested, that we talk about what that might look like in each building and where it's appropriate. We have them here. Where it's safe, we have them here. And where we need to be flexible, we also be flexible. We ask our teachers to see our students as individuals, and I think along the same lines, we need to see our colleagues as individuals as well. And so I, I thank you for allowing me to just weigh in and share at least this guy's perspective. Maybe others might feel differently. And so if that was the case, we wouldn't need a motion to that effect. We would continue as, as we have been, if that would be amenable to the board.
Can we hear some timelines and what the next steps would be under individual conversations with staff? We know that this is a big part of their anxiety right now, and I don't want to make it sound like we're not taking this seriously enough or being inconclusive or not providing enough direction.
Well, thank you. I know Sarah Earthham's on the call here tonight. She's our Human Resources Coordinator. Sarah, could I trouble you to come on to the call and just speak to, if you've had a chance to speak with the 50 or so staff members, and we have what we need from them at this point?
Hi, yeah, absolutely. Thank you for the question, Kimberly. Yes, I have been in contact with everyone that has reached out in regards to the survey that we put out in, back in June and have been working with those staff to have individual conversations. So I feel really good about where we're at with that. And we've spent a lot of time kind of having that information and sharing and conversation with everybody. So that part, I feel like we are in a good space and have completed that piece of it. There are still a few individuals that I'm waiting to hear back from some medical professionals on and things like that, but we'll work to get that wrapped up here in the next probably week or so.
That coupled with the fact that we will also be working with individual departments, talking with individual staff. I think about, for example, welding. Gosh, we, you can't do welding at home safely without having great teachers like we do have at our high school who can help demonstrate, model, ensure safety for. We can do that at different times throughout the, throughout the day. So I think it's individualized, and I think we can get to a yes in bringing people back once we've met those criteria that I laid out in the gradual reopening of our school's plan. Does that help answer your questions, Kimberly?
Yes, and I just want to be perfectly clear on the issue of do staff have a choice to return if they do not feel safe to, if they're okay through 12th teacher and do not wish to. So general subject teachers do not wish to. Could they then teach from home, or is this motion directing them to return to their classrooms?
Thank you. Thus far, in the six months we've been through this pandemic, we were able to get to a mutual understanding and a collaborative yes. I suspect as time goes on, that might be a little bit more sticky. And in those instances whereby we need a staff member to be in our buildings, we do have the authority to direct our workforce. And that would mean asking them to come in and, and work, provided, of course, everything is safe. And at this point, we have no reason to believe that the cleanliness, the airflow, all the kinds of things that we've been spending these past several months on has, has not paid dividends for us. We wouldn't have people engaging in meetings together, large meetings in person. We would do everything we can to make certainly honor order number eight. But yes, there will be times whereby we're just going to need to say to a staff member, how can we get to a yes on this? We're going to need your help being here for X number of hours on Wednesday of next week. I know our staff. I know our staff are dedicated and loving. We're going to do whatever we can to provide them accommodations so that they can feel comfortable about coming in. Those folks who have the accommodations that have been approved through Sarah Earthham's team that's been reviewing those accommodations, of course, we're going to honor those as well.
That's quite right. So I just want to make two, two parting points, at least from my perspective. One is I just want to reiterate my belief that it is good operating practice for us to have our, our folks in the, in the buildings. I understand these are, these are strange and, and in many ways horrible, horrible times. But as they become, become less and less horrible, it becomes more and more important that we give our kids a sense of normalcy in, in school. And, and again, I think as a general, general operating principle, we ought to, we ought to shoot for having folks in, in their buildings. Having said that, I'm comfortable with, with what Dr. Salerno has, has outlined, provided that it comes back to the board in some, some actionable form. And, and so we can have perhaps a fuller discussion about it at, at that point and to, to hear what was, was found out in the discussions that he plans to have. And then we can take whatever action might be appropriate for the, for the board to take.
Brad, this is Jessica. I have two thoughts. One, you know, we've already agreed to a plus model, which we haven't completely developed. So we haven't exactly figured out how many students and staff might be in the building. So I don't, I don't feel like we're at a point where we could then say, yes, let's bring everybody back, when really we might only want to bring a few people back. So I, I think if we're going to revisit this later, like you just mentioned, that might be something that we want to have really figured out so that we could have this discussion a little bit with more information. so that we could have this discussion a little bit with more information. Yeah, I had another point, but I've already lost it.
Right.
And Jessica, if you don't mind me just mentioning, I just don't think anybody wants to because we have the need to serve our students in some capacity here in our building, that we don't run into a supply to meet the demand of the kids who are in our buildings. We need to be able to say to our staff, X number of EL kids, English language kids, need support. Staff, we're going to schedule you to come in and help us with that. I think the needs of our students should be the driver.
I agree. And I guess Kimberly also made this comment earlier. Having a student, like we have this group of students who need in-person learning, so we're asking you to be in the building, it's to me different than saying all staff are required to be in the building. And I would just like whatever motion we make to be a little more thoughtful and a little bit more variable based on student needs.
Great. Thank you. Other questions or comments on seven, aye? I don't hear a motion. So we'll move on unless there's a motion coming. Fair enough. Seven, aye? We'll move on to seven, J, consideration of a motion regarding the disposition and payment of employees.
Board members, when we did our plan for you just a few moments ago, I outlined the unintended consequences of jettisoning a number of our staff members only two weeks later recall them back and the fiscal, as well as the the impact to our school district's operations when we're trying to revamp back up again. I wonder if you would indulge us to continue to find purposeful and worthwhile work for each of our support staff employees during this critical time.
So moved. This is Jessica. I second.
Has seconded a motion that would allow the superintendent and his team to work with employees for whom work may be reduced or eliminated to find them meaningful work at the district. Is there any further discussion?
This is Kimberly. I'm just wondering if, as you're reassigning roles, if perhaps if it doesn't violate any personal content or information, we could get some updates on what those reassignments are looking like and how they're serving the district?
Yes, I'd be happy to supply that to you.
And I just have a comment. One of the reasons why I'm making the motion is because I'm hopeful that things are going to normalize sooner as opposed to later. And that these folks will be back in their originally assigned positions sooner as opposed to later. And to Dr. Salerno's point, you know, we don't want to lose them. It will be hard to get them back if we lose them.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of a motion made by Danny and seconded by Jeff to enable, to allow the superintendent to continue his work to find meaningful work for those employees for whom work may be reduced or eliminated during the first quarter of 2020. All those in favor will say aye.
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 Those opposed, no. The ayes have it, the motion carries and the disposition and payment of employees for whom work may be reduced or eliminated will continue to be evaluated and worked through with Dr. Salerno. All right. So can I just make a, can I, everybody take a deep breath? And sit up straight in their chair real quickly. So seven, I will come back to us, perhaps not in that form, but as a report from you and then something actionable by the board.
If you'd like. Yes, absolutely.
Yep. Very good. I just wanted to make sure that we tied off that loose end. Moving on then to item eight, citizen comments, eight A. Those who would like to speak, would you please text your first and last names to 608-250-9166? That's 608-250-9166.
CJ Goodwin would like to speak, it looks like. Awesome. CJ?
I really just wanted to apologize. My internet was a little questionable for about 40 minutes. Not sure what was going on out in the village of Blue Mounds. But was there any questions or concerns that came up that I could speak to? Again, I apologize.
I think you got us covered, CJ. I think all is well.
Excellent. And if anything comes up again, please don't hesitate to email myself or Pam or both of us. That always works pretty well. We usually respond to emails within about 24 hours here during the summer hours. So thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much, CJ. All right, 608-250-9166. Make your pledge now. I can't say this more than one more time. 608-250-9166. All right. Is there anyone for citizen comments? Is there anyone for citizen comments? You've got a great phone number if you do, but is there anyone for citizen comments?
What would that phone number be?
That number is 608-250-9166. We'll wait just one second. Because we know this is going to be the biggest pledge of the night.
Brad, I think you need to make up a jingle to go with the phone number.
Would that involve me singing?
Yes, it would.
Oh, all right. Fair enough then. Brooke Ronnie would like to speak tonight, please. Go ahead, Brooke.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure, go ahead.
Great. Thank you so much for all of the work that you're doing. I know behind the scenes, it's probably a lot more than what we even realize. As an employee and parent of the district, I am very grateful to all of you for making these really difficult decisions. I must say, I am a little disheartened right now that a decision has not been made in regards to if all staff need to be in the building. It's August 3rd, and we have spent our entire last quarter and now summer planning, replanning, reorganizing, trying to figure out childcare. Oh, we don't need childcare. Oh, I'm going to do it. It's just, it's a lot on our plates. I'm worried about the mental health of our staff. I'm on that committee, and I can safely say I have concerns about our staff and their anxiety level right now. I don't think many are sleeping. And I think if we could make more decisions, the sooner the better. It would put us all a little bit at ease because we would know what the plan is instead of having plans A through Z. Again, I thank you all. I appreciate what you're doing. I was hopeful that there would be a decision made tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Brooke.
We don't have any others?
We don't have any others. We don't have any others. Are there others for citizen comments as a last call? Last call. Very good. Hearing none. We'll move on to item nine, future agenda items. You can read through those. If there's one that you'd like to be added or one that you think needs to be given priority, let us know. Item 10, schedule of next meetings.
Quick question on the schedule of next meetings. This is Leah. There's not an August board meeting. And in one of the presentations, I think Dr. Salerno, you had August 17th, and I have August 24th in my calendar, so I'm just wondering, when is our next August board meeting?
Thank you. I see the meeting is scheduled for August 17th. Forgive me. I, for some reason, must have missed that. That is in line with our safety and wellness committee.
Okay, fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you. Just as a friendly reminder, the board meeting in September, the first one in September, is actually held on a Tuesday night because the 7th is Labor Day. So it would be Tuesday, the 8th.
Awesome. Any other questions or comments on the schedule? Hearing none. Item 11, closed session. Contemplated, say that five times fast, closed session. Per Section 19.85, Paragraph 1, Subparagraph C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the government body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibilities requires a motion and a roll call vote.
This is Leah. So moved.
Leah has made a motion. Jeff has seconded a motion to adjourn to closed session. We'll now take our roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Leah?
Yes.
Kimberly?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
When I am a yes, we will take five minutes and then we'll reconvene in closed session. Do we have a script? Do we have a number that has been circulated?
Yes, I'll go ahead and I'll resend the link out just in case everybody missed it.
Very good.